I apologize for that. Technical difficulties. This meeting a little difficult from the city of Sacramento where we're attending our conference. But good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. And special meeting of Madera City Council as successor agency to the former Madera Redevelopment Agency. Today is Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It is now six P. M. The council chambers will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and partition through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the state's website at www.madera.gov backslash live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter ID eight two seven zero zero eight one two zero two seven hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov. Or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven. I hereby call the regular meeting of the city council to order. It is six oh one. Alicia, would you please call the role?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protemejia.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas. You're on mute, Councilmember Vegas.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is the pastor there, Tim Charia?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Would you all please rise for the invocation by the pastor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protemejia. Police and everybody here in our fire department as well. So I say I'm honored to be here. We're just gonna bow our heads today. Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, God. And Father, I just pray, Lord, God, right now, God, that you would take control of this whole meeting, Lord. Father, we pray for your wisdom, God. We pray for your understanding, God. And Father, we pray, God, for your anointing, Lord, God. Father, I lift up everything that's being spoken about today, God. I pray you for your favor, God, over our city, over our police department, God, our fire department, God, and over every agency, God, inside this room, God. We lift up our mayor, God, and our city council members, Lord, God, that you give them the wisdom that comes from heaven, God. We want to thank you, God, for our city, God. We want to thank you for all the people in our city, God. And I pray that you would lead us, that you would guide us. And Father, we need you, Lord, right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. We give you the glory, and, God, we give you all the honor. We pray that you would be magnified and glorified. And in the name of Jesus, Lord, God, we pray, and we all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you all remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. We'll ask my colleagues if they have any changes or additions to the agenda. Hearing none? I will listen for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to approve the agenda.
Seconded then.
Moved to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Gallegos, seconded by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protemejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas? You're on mute, Councilmember?
Ah, yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no written communications, no presentations, no introductions. There are no workshops. We will now move on to consent calendar. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I've got to hold ahead of myself. We'll go back to public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Alicia, do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak under public comment?
We do, Mayor. To approach the podium, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Ortiz, and I live on twenty seventy-five Lemon Avenue here in Madera. And I just wanted to talk about a road also known as Hazel Avenue, which has become a liability to our community. And there's always, every, on a weekly basis, there are things being dumped, garbage, and a lot of other stuff. And, you know, and so we're hoping to, hopefully, if we could get that road shut down and if we could perhaps beautify it to restore the dignity of our community by perhaps making a type of botanical garden, if you may, along that that strip of road. And so imagine yourself playing with your loved ones, you know, basketball, whatever, and and all of a sudden, you're you're interrupted by a reckless driver coming from Hazel, which is something that we face commonly to the degree that we're afraid to play with our children in the front of our houses. And so, you know, we've had several near misses. And so now, you know, we're hoping that we can, we could better for, better our area. Because, like I was saying, there's, on a weekly basis, there's, there's been stolen cars that are burnt back there. There's been, you know, the worst and the the grossest to us, to my family, is used condoms that are thrown on the sidewalk. And this is almost on a nightly basis. You know, and I mean, there's even been kitchen sinks out there. So, you know, everything's pretty much been out there, you know, and so we hope to, to, like I was saying, bring some, some, some dignity back. And and we have the the community unity and the the manpower to to make a, like I said, a botanical garden that'll that'll turn this ghetto-looking area into something that we could actually appreciate. You know, to wrap it up, I would, I wanna just, I'd like to just live in a neighborhood that it, that is normal and and not run down by strangers, you know, or outsiders that just come in and much less, does one wanna fear going for a stroll in a indecent, you know, and being exposed to indecent things, you know. And so, lastly, and and who in their right mind does not want a beautiful garden to walk about in which one can enjoy the smell of blossoms while admiring drought-resistant plants that are exotic and live with little to no water? And so I'm originally from the city of Woodlake, and there's a botanical garden that is over there. The way they started it, they didn't even ask the city. They just started, they just planted an area, and the city went to them and said, you know what, whatever you're doing, keep it up. And now you guys could look it up. And to me, it's, it turned into one of the seven wonders of Tulare County. And so why not? We have, we have the ability to do something here in Madera. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Morce Sanchez. I reside at twenty-one eleven Lemon Avenue. I am David's neighbor. He actually brought up a lot of things that actually happen on a, or pretty much occur on a daily basis. Since I live in the corner, I get to actually physically view and watch what's going on. People, they don't care. They come from the, the pretty much not-so-good areas or neighborhoods. They come actually dump of broken appliances, trash. I've seen people actually just dump stolen vehicles in the back, you know, I've witnessed the vehicles being burned down. It's unsaid that a good neighborhood needs to come to this to where we cannot even take our own children who pour walks because there's actual people that like drifting those corners or even burn out. You actually go on Hazel Avenue, it's about a hundred meter long, and you could see all the marks there. People tend to go raise there all the time. I've seen it, close calls. I almost got hit. I've also seen other people walking through, almost getting hit because people tend to lose control. And it's very unsaid that that street is still open and giving access to just anybody to go there. That's really pretty much, there should be no access for anybody to go there and commit illicit acts. I've seen, like my neighbor said, from used condoms to actual needles, and kids go there. They ride their bikes, skateboards, or people just go for walks. That's pretty much nasty. You know, they actually go do drugs over there. You could smell it, and everything goes into the house. The racing is the main one. They, people just don't care, you know. If there's biohazards out there, you know, and you can't pretty much take your kids out for a walk because you're afraid for them to step, step on it, or so even walk out there because people don't care. They'll see you walking with your kids, and they'll still floor it, pedal to the metal on that little stretch of road, you know. It's just unsaid, you know. That's just from my perspective, because I get to see everything there. And it sucks when you actually try to talk to people, hey, what are you doing? Don't dump the trash here. Then they start to harass you. And, all right, you know, I'm just gonna stay by rather because at that point, you harass somebody because they're trying to say, hey, go dump it in, in the appropriate spots, you know, go to the dump site. Because technically, that road is just a dump street. It's not even an actual street to where people could actually walk. There's nothing back there. It's fenced off and orchard. There's no more buildings or anything like that, ladies and gentlemen. So if anybody could actually assist in blocking off that street to public access, that'd be great. And if need be, if if there's issues when it comes to budgeting or funds, I myself, I'm, I'm pretty sure my neighbors are more than happy to make it happen if it cannot occur to where that street is blocked off for access just to anybody. It's just, like I said, people don't care. They're ruthless. They go race over there near, it sucks, seeing all the things.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, both of you gentlemen. If you could do us a favor and leave your contact information with our clerk, maybe we can have a discussion later point in time and, you know, look into this. So if you would, leave your contact information, please.
Yes, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak at the podium?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Manriquez. I live at twenty-eight, twenty-eighty-eight Lemon Avenue. I'm one of the neighbors. Reason I'm here is not only is that stuff going on, there's drug deals that are going on back there. I've been there for seventeen years. I'm one of the original owners that's still left in the area. Ever since we moved there, there hasn't been one year that I haven't had to call the police department to go take care of some issues that were going on. They've been really good about going out there, but recently, it's been getting worse. Like my neighbor said, you know, there's condoms back there. There's drug deals going back there. Cars getting burned. There've been two cars that have been stolen and burnt back there. There's a car that's been abandoned. You know, there's condoms everywhere. And like, like you said, you know, there's needles. You look up and down the street, you won't go more than a hundred feet where you're gonna find a needle or even a condom, which is ridiculous because all of this stuff goes on at night when most of the people are asleep. There've been gunshots. And I found casings back there, and I've called the police department. They've gone and picked them up. You find everything back there from a twenty-two to a forty-five caliber. You know, I called the police department not too long ago where there was a shooting. There was a car that had pulled around. The shooting just happened, and I thought they were part of the shooting, so I called the police department to go check it out. Well, there was a couple that were trying to make out right around the corner from there. So they had to move the area, but I don't think they ever found the people that did the shooting. But there's shootings constantly now when it used to be a really good neighborhood. I really like that that street to be closed down. I do work for the county of Madera. I'm the manager of transportation for Madera County, superintendent of schools. If they can close down or even have bus drivers not go through certain areas, I don't see why they can't close this down. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, John Tipton, two-six-two-zero-nine Avenue seventeen, Madera. And I was really wondering if the city relocated any of the homeless folks that called the river bottom home before or during the recent rains, if there was anything you guys could do to mitigate their, the disaster that they were stuck in. And on another note, the L.A. Times recently did a really excellent piece on the botanical garden in Woodlake. It's a great idea. Good luck.
Thank you.
My name's Michelle Trittler. I didn't, I didn't know I was coming tonight, so I didn't plan a speech, but I live at two oh nine nine Lemon Avenue, and I am these guy's name.
Michelle, Michelle, would you mind speaking into the microphone a little bit?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, good. My name's Michelle Trittler. I live at two oh nine nine Lemon Avenue. I lived there about six years, and I'm here to join my neighbors. I didn't prepare a discussion. I didn't even know I was coming tonight. I am in agreement. I see everything they see. The water's up. The water's coming over. Guess what's floating down the street? Everything that they're talking about. It is a young neighborhood with lots of children, lots of people walking in that neighborhood. It is a lot of biohazards hanging around, flowing down the street from that street. If there is a gate, you could put a crossed, lock, fire, could have a key to it, police can have a key to it on each end of it. I think that would help the dumping, the crime, and everything else is going on back there. I don't think it would be that much of a cost to put a cross gate that locks that all police and fire department have access to to get back there. It's not used by the farm workers. They have access to that farm back there on Avenue twelve. They have their own road on that, in there, to get access to there. I've never seen farm equipment go down there, and that's what I heard. That's the excuse of why that road is open. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Zion Ortiz, and I, I am staying on, how do you say, twenty seventy-five Lemon Avenue. And I'm just, I wanna speak up as well since it's left unclean and infectious. It's just, how do you say it, poison, zooted poisonous. And I can't even just go with my siblings. Just, I gotta like steer them away from all the trouble, from any little minor inconvenience we run into, such as, like they were saying, condoms, needles, a bunch of beer ornaments, how do you say it, and so forth. It just invites the mischievous people. They're always just, once it hits, once evening hits, they come around, such as window shoppers. It's always new cars. I never, you know, there's always somebody new in the neighborhood. And they're always, how do you say it, if you, if you just see around, like, there's not no corner where the fence isn't not rebuilt, but like, the fence has been ran into. And, yeah, young couples, reckless drivers, it's like a racetrack ventures. There's no, how do you say it? No morals, no values in the people that are coming around. Just today, I went for a walk. I was taking pictures of all the stuff. It was gruesome even more than I was expecting. And, yeah, it was just pretty gruesome. I ran into many inconveniences. I tried to talk to many neighbors, but more, they were more not for it. They, there was some that were, but they just didn't see the time. They didn't want to put in time. And just lately, like three days ago, there was a shooting, which I got ahold of the video, if anybody wants to see it after this. And they actually came in from this one street we're talking about. You could see the trucks were being chasing. I'm not sure how it actually went down, but they were shooting out of the truck, fired like a couple, I think, I believe, three shots. And apart from that, let me see, yeah, there's just many inconveniences. They actually stole one of my cars a while back. And it just, yeah, pretty much.
Thank you. Are there any written public comments, Alicia?
No written public comment, Mayor, and there's no one else in the chamber.
Keduki. Nothing from the, in the electronic mark?
Yeah, there's no one on Zoom.
Thank you. We will now close public comment. There are no written communications, presentations, introductions, workshops. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No written public comment, Mayor, and no one in the chamber.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now close public comment for this item. I will now ask for a discussion and or a motion from my colleagues.
Move to approve consent as presented.
Motion to approve the consent item by Councilmember Montes, seconded by Councilmember Vegas. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans? You're on.
Yes.
Mayor Protemejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings. We will now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D one, I believe, Mr. Helmuth, you have this item?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I've got the screen up there correct, but we're gonna go, I'll work with it for now. Well, I guess I do. Thank you, Alicia. Anyway, thank you, Mayor and council members. As has been clear for the last few weeks, we've been actively working on a pipe that broke on Focana Avenue. Well, Matt Bullis will be giving the presentation tonight. I just wanted to make a quick statement prior to that. While we all wish the pipe had not broken before we could implement a project to enforce it, we are fortunate that we have staff that's well qualified to, qualified to respond to such an event. That staff is represented by the Public Works Department that ably and efficiently dealt with the urgent needs in the field. Our staff in the Engineering Department that quickly pulled together good response that include consultants and the contractor fixing the pipe, as well as our city manager that took an active role in monitoring and providing resources and direction where needed. In addition, we had various utility companies that have been very helpful. You know, the utility companies have, have, have came, come forward and helped us out in, in situations that might not Uh, in, in situations that might not normally be, go as, as easily. They have, they, they have really jumped in. Anyway, those, those, those agencies include PG&E and the Union Pacific Railroad. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and pass this along to Matt and he's got a presentation to go ahead and, uh, give and, uh, we'll go ahead and. See what he has to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of council, Matthew Bullis, Senior Engineer, Engineering. What I have before you is a, uh, basically a, uh, request for approval of emergency repair items. That we are currently conducting out at this site. So emergency repairs is sewer main, which is located at Avenue thirteen and Granada Drive. See if I get this right. Buttons aren't working. A summary of what's going on is, uh, the sewer main collapsed. This is the, uh, and it occurred on January second and it's located at Pecan and Granada Drive. To the right, there's a picture of a, basically a sinkhole next to that PG&E pole that's in the way. That's, uh, had a potential for caving in. So that's what was discovered. Um, and basically, uh, we have hired Floyd Johnson Construction to make the emergency repairs on the pipeline. Under public contract code without competitive bidding. Uh, this is an aerial photo. Uh, on the left is the county road right away, known as Avenue thirteen. On the right with the city is, of course, it's Pecan Drive, Pecan Avenue. And the site of damage is circled and it is about forty feet to the, uh, west of Granada. On Pecan Drive. This is a main forty-two inch line that comes down by the railroad, makes a little turn. Goes down Avenue thirteen and supplies the sewage treatment with sewer flow from the city. Little history of the sewer main. As I mentioned, only, uh, this is the only sanitary sewer main, trunk main that conveys all the city sewage to the wastewater treatment. We have one line. Uh, this one at this location is forty-two inches. And it goes to about forty-eight inches before it reaches, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, down by Avenue third, at the end of Terminus at twenty-six. Uh, the pipeline has poor structural integrity, uh, has previously been documented in two thousand and sixteen. A similar sewer main collapse occurred at the intersection of Howard and Shore. It was repaired. We had to bypass pump and it was repaired in, in that date. Also, uh, in two thousand and twenty, a condition assessment, uh, was conducted on the whole pipeline. Along shore and Avenue thirteen, and it did reveal a significant degradation of the concrete pipe structure. Uh, this was discussed in front of city council at a meeting on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. On November twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, MKN Associates is a design engineer. And they were hired through, uh, the city process to design the pipeline repair, uh, project. Project plans are currently at thirty percent complete and they will be bid out this summer, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and this will basically, uh, repair the whole line, uh, not just this area, but the whole line on Avenue thirteen sewer main. Uh, sequence events, what happened? Uh, we showed you on that picture previously, a little sinkhole that developed. On January second, a sinkhole on Avenue thirteen was discovered by, um, Madera County. As we know, uh, at that intersection, Avenue thirteen is Madera County, uh, property. We have an easement on Avenue thirteen for that pipeline. On January third, the city was notified of the sinkhole and, uh, possible line break. Anytime we see a sinkhole, we're suspecting the, the worst case scenario. Due to the critical nature of the project, staff was directed by the city manager to engage Floyd Johnson Construction concerning pipeline repair under emergency actions. Floyd Johnson's out of Clovis. He's a pipeline underground contractor, well-known in the community in the Central Valley as doing this type of work. So, uh, on January fourth, uh, I, I called Floyd Johnson and we met on site. So that Floyd could provide us a cost estimate for the repair. Uh, taking a look at the damage to the pipeline, the street and the PG&E utilities that were evident on the site. Uh, city crews started, uh, driving the alignment, uh, observing any additional sinkholes. We have some one, but that pipeline is quite a long distance all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. So they continue to look on the lines to see if there was any other damage evident. On January fourth, uh, city crews had a CCTV inspection. They have the equipment and it revealed a large hole, about two foot by two foot on the left side of the pipe. However, the pipe at that time was not plugged and full conveyance of the flow was going to the plant. So we had a little hole. It was bridged, but the, the flow was, was holding up. On January sixth, Floyd Johnson provided a cost estimate. Um, this says three ninety-four for the bypass pumping and repair. We actually later added thirty-five thousand dollars to that. To take care of all the traffic control of that. On the weekend of January eighth and ninth, uh, the city of Madera occurred a significant rain event. And, uh, this may have contributed to the collapse of the pipeline. On January ninth, the sewer main at this location had further collapsed at the location and completely blocked the flow. Uh, of, to the wastewater treatment plant, started backing up in the line. Usually it takes about an hour and a half before it discharges. So we had a few hours to make some repairs. City crews, city staff, public work staff assembled. Uh, they had some bypass pumping that we'd used all over town. They had an extra, uh, bypass pump at the wastewater plant. They started assembling crew and bypass pumping the sewage from. Uh, upstream manhole to a downstream manhole. Uh, they also called Rainforen and, and received a few hours later. Two rental, uh, rental equipment, uh, bypass pumps. So within three or four hours, we had four bypass pumps discharging and, and going around the, around the bend. On January ninth, Floyd Johnson was hired immediately to start work on emergency repair. Uh, FJC was on site within hours, notifications, started mobilizing crews. Uh, they were notified that the bypass pumping by the crews was going to take, we were notified it was gonna take four days. They basically brought in a crew from Sacramento and they ran a polyethylene line about five hundred yards downstream. And it was gonna take them four days to set up. So they started that assembly and the city crews maintained twenty-four hour bypass pumping. With those pumps, uh, during this timeline. On January tenth, Floyd Johnson assumed traffic control for us. We had originally had traffic control. They took over. January twelfth, PG&E, uh, removed the conflicting power pole and there's a big shout outs to PG&E for getting in there and moving that pole. It was ready to, it was in the hole, ready to collapse. So they moved very quickly and, uh, addressed the problem at, for their line. On January thirteenth, Floyd Johnson assumed control of the bypass pumping. Theirs was ready. We could do demo, uh, demobilize our equipment. They took control. We sent the rental pumps back. We sent our equipment back to other jobs. And, uh, Floyd Johnson continues to this, this day of, uh, moving forward with the pipeline replacement. A lot of things have to be done. They are handling the situation. City crews continue, uh, to, to help as needed. We brought in dirt for them. We've been out there monitoring the activities, trying to help them in their, in their endeavors. And being allies into, uh, all the utilities in that area. So, uh, I showed you the little, uh, cave in. This is the cave in right now. This was like day three or four. Uh, you can see on the right, I can use the pointer, see if the pointer works. Over here, you can see, this is the. Uh, Floyd Johnson polyethylene line coming around the corner and they're gonna set up here, but what you see is one, two. And, uh, there might be a third, uh, bypass pump and it's going around the corner in city. This is the city lines here going downstream. So we have two sets of bypass pumps going on on the left. I can get the pointer there. This is the hole that's caving in. This is the PG&E pole that was replaced, uh, by PG&E crews. Uh, this is an overview looking aerial photo of the site. This is the day PG&E brought, uh, a large amount of equipment in. Uh, I wanna note that, uh, this is during heavy rain events. PG&E has lots of outages. They didn't know if they could mobilize a truck. I see they have six trucks there for us. So major, uh, props go to PG&E to, uh, to, uh, handle that situation quickly. They moved the line over, redid the electrical, get it, got it out of the way. Uh, we basically, the brake is right here. This is, this is from that point out to right there. You can see us in the pointer where we discharge. The brake is right here, but we have to replace this eighty-foot, seventy-seven-foot run from manhole, that manhole. Now that wasn't good. The downstream manhole to the upstream manhole and we're, we were setting up over here to, to, we moved the bypass pump to the upstream manhole. So we're having, uh, issues there and here. One of the things I know, probably talking too much, but we have a twenty-seven inch line. That runs to this manhole and it crosses the railroad tracks here. Very difficult for us because we're trying to bypass pump over the railroad line. That is in service all the time. So that is what we're trying to deal with as we speak. Uh, as it says here, the estimated cost, including the traffic control is four twenty-nine, two forty-five for the repair of the pipeline, bypass pumping. And traffic control to Floyd Johnson Construction. Uh, basically the city paid rental costs for the bypass pumps was fifteen thousand. That does not include staff time to operate those pumps for twenty-four seven. Uh, there are extra charges that are gonna come up. Uh, there's unknown site conditions we're digging up. This is a project without plans and specs. We're going out and we're making the fixes as we go. Things are gonna come up. Uh, the utility relocations. I have AT&T lines in the ground. I have utility relocations with the, uh, the, uh, there's a water line there. A high pressure gas line, as I mentioned, PG&E costs, and these are unknown and have not been determined as we speak. To recall, uh, were costs for emergency repairs will, will be applied to the sewer fund. As you see here, we have listed, the city received a five million dollar, uh, I believe it was a grant through, uh, state budget AB one seventy-nine. Uh, probably was a, a direct fund that I sent grant. Uh, we received three point five million through the Consolidated Prostration Act through, uh, uh, that event. Uh, and we, and city council was allocated the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, previously for sewer and water utility projects, uh, for this project and for complete repair of the line. Uh, what I have before you is a request, uh, and I'm gonna read it off. The resolution of, uh, reviewing the action taken by the city manager to make emergency repairs on the sanitary sewer main. And ratifying the order of the emergency contract without competitive bidding for the emergency repairs on the sewer main at Avenue thirteen and Granada Drive. Uh, with that, it concludes my presentation. I'm open to any, uh, questions that you may have of me.
Thank you very much for that very well documented and detailed report. It really helps to, for us to understand the processes that we had to go through and the emergency conditions, like, you know. And to all the, our city staff, you know, for helping us out and being there for us. It's amazing what you've done in a short period of time. Arnaldo, did you wanna add anything to that report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I would add is, um, um, going back to something Keith said, there are crews were exceptional. Um, we, we had a lot of people out there assisting. Um, every time I went out there, we had a crew that was, um. And they were high energy, they were heavily engaged. We, we had, um, a lot of engineers from, uh, come from the engineering team. We had a lot of resources from the public works team. So thank you very much to Jamie and his team for being out there. It, it, it truly was a team effort. I think there was a couple of moments there of, of, of concern. But we were able to mitigate any serious issues to obviously the repair is a serious issue, but we didn't have any spills or anything like that. So I think Jamie and his crew and Keith and his team deserve a tremendous amount of credit. So thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Alicia, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Then I will close public comment for this item and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or emotion.
I just wanted to add a comment, Mayor. I was out there with the city manager and it was amazing to see all the efforts that every. Inch of our city employees had a part in this. To the person who was out there all day and night, to the officers that took care of their safety. Because we had some crazy drivers out there when I was out there, um, to our engineering department that made sure. That what we needed was needed and, um, the streets to block it off. We had angry residents that were upset. They had to go all the way around. We had somebody almost drive on the tracks. Um, but I don't think people realize this is our main sewer line to the city. Everybody's sewer goes into this main line. I don't think our community also realizes it's sixteen feet down. Um, that's gonna take a lot of effort and time to get down there to even get to the pipe to replace. So I asked our citizens of the city to be patient because, um, if I'm not mistaken, this is gonna be a two-week repair. Or maybe more, cause we don't know exactly what's down there until we get down there to see what we're gonna really need to do to repair it. So, um, I'm asking for this community to have, have patience, because that's the major roads that are being blocked off in the city. And, um, just kudos to everyone. It is just amazing that we've come together. And, um, because we were so smart in the flow of the water in the city and making sure that we didn't float away. So like, like some other cities, that we were able to redirect our staff to this problem here. Um, so I commend our city manager for having the foresight for, uh, MID partnerships with basins. And because of that, it was easy to put everyone where we needed to be at this point. So, um, thank you everyone for taking your time out of way for your families to make sure that everyone in the city was taken care of. And thank you for that report.
Should I, I also have, uh, some questions, uh, constant. Thank you for all staff that was out there and everything. It's just not easy. Especially when we had some pretty good, uh, downpours and I think we're manning it twenty-four seven, right?
That is.
So I really do appreciate.
During the rain event.
During the rain.
Yeah, we're pulling pumps from other sites to demand this. It is over five million gallons a day comes to that line.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I appreciate everything that staff was doing. Um, I do have some questions regarding the completion of the replacement of the full line. I know that's not something that's easy as well. Um, you said the engineering is about fifteen percent.
The plans show thirty percent design. We are anticipating bidding the hundred percent this summer.
Okay.
But we are at currently thirty percent design. There was a couple of alternatives, reline the old pipe or others. But basically we are anticipating summer of twenty twenty-three.
To bid and then.
To bid and then there's a process long, a length time for the contract. That's a long, long run of pipe.
Yeah, no, and, and, um, I know you've already identified at least one area that had some issues. Do we have an estimate of when that pipe would be completed? Yeah, ballpark. I'm not gonna be like, hey, you said at this day, you know, two years ago that you're gonna have it done by the state.
I don't, did you have, did they have a line from MKN? I'd be throwing out a number that I'm used to in my.
And it's okay, you can, you can get back to us. It's not, I, I'm just, you know, asking the questions because, um, like you said, we've had other sections that have had failures. And you've identified already one other portion that could, and I know it's further out, it's closer to the wastewater treatment plant. But it'd be something that we'd have to address, cause if we don't, sewer shuts down for the whole city.
Correct. So the, the plan for the project is to actually do a lining. So it's gonna be dependent upon the availability of the materials of the liner and any spot repairs that might need to take place. So, um, we don't have an estimate of that yet. When we get closer to bidding, um, we can provide that. Um, just depends what's going on in, in the construction community as far as the availability of materials.
Okay, alright. And I'm, and it's, I'm not trying to, I'm just asking the questions. I'm not trying to say anybody's doing a, a bad job or to, you know, accelerate. Cause I know these projects are, they take a long time and they're very expensive. As you can see, we had to go and ask the state, uh, for some funding for that.
So, and just to point out the, from this point out to the plant, there's two phases. Obviously addressing the worst phases first. Um, if the funding is available with those, uh, funds that we have received. We're hoping to be able to do both phases at the same time. So yes, that would be about three miles. Otherwise, first phase is about a mile and a half.
Thank you. This is my question. You have any questions?
Any other colleague wishing to address this item?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question, but I'm not sure if that'd be a question for you or city manager. I know this is an unanticipated cost, uh, actually happened as an emergency. So what kind of impact does that have on our, um, our, our budget for the, um, uh, the process of what we set for the, the fee schedule? On the Prop two eighteen process. Does that impact that at all? I, I know it's tracking up closer to half a million dollars. We don't know, there's undisclosed amounts for the other repairs that'll take place for the utilities and all. Uh, so does that have an impact?
The city manager may, may want to go ahead and jump into this, but, uh, generally speaking, I don't believe it'll have an impact on that. The, uh, the, the grant funds were not totally built into the rates and originally, not all of the grant funds were built into the rates. So this shouldn't have a, a, a material effect on the, on those. Uh, Arnold, I may wish to, he may have a different opinion of that.
Good, no, can thank you, Keith. And so, and so I would agree with Keith. The eight and a half million dollars that we received, the five million from the state and the three and a half, half million dollars from, from US Congress. those, those funds were not incorporated into the Prop two eighteen study, given that at the time we had not received them. And so, um, I think can just like anything, anytime you have emergencies, you have to address those. And then when you have to go back and reassess where you're at in a year or two, I think you do so with whatever information you have in front of you on that day. Um, sometimes they're moving targets and they're not perfect and they appear messy, but going back to what Keith said, um, you know, we don't believe it's going to impact it, but at the same time, once we have a better idea of how far the eight point five million dollars can take us on the rehab and how the bids come back, that I, I believe is going to give us a much better opportunity to kind of reexamine the entire project. Um, and hopefully we have adequate funds to cover it. Um, you know, could we should, but going back to what Ellen said, we have a phase one and a phase two. Our goal is to try to do as much as we can and hopefully we can cover both phases.
Oh, thank you. And I'm assuming that we, we may have a depreciation account that's built into that. So, uh, maybe a year from now, whatever we collect with the new rates, then maybe that has, uh, uh, some impact to that. But I want to thank you, Matt, for your presentation and thank the staff for their efforts at the, uh, the site.
Let's see more, any more hands raised? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve item D one as presented, Mayor.
Okay, you guys are going to have to fight over that one. I heard, I heard Mr. Montes, then I heard two other people, so. Give me a heads up.
I have a motion from Councilmember Montes and a second from Councilmember Gallegos. That's what I caught, Mayor.
Thank you, Alicia. Always to the rescue. Motion to approve item D one by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Gallegos. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temeja?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas? And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you much all. Thank you for that report. Excellent job. Keep up the good work. D two, item D two, actions related to successor agency annual budget reporting to the Department of Finance. Action on this item by the successor agency. I mean, I believe, uh, uh, Miss Caulfield, do you have this item?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Camfield is not available, so I'll be taking the item tonight.
Absolutely.
Go ahead and share my screen. Okay, does everybody see that okay?
Yes.
All right, for tonight, uh, the recognized obligation payment schedule or, or the ROPS for short, uh, we're requesting an amount for the period of July twenty twenty three through June of twenty twenty four. The purpose, uh, is to prove the budget, uh, for the approval of the budget is a consideration of a resolution adopting the, the ROPS, uh, representing period of July one, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four for the City of Madera as a successor agency of the former Madera redevelopment agency of the City of Madera. And the second resolution is approving the administrative budget for the City of Madera as a successor agency of the former Madera redevelopment agency of the City of Madera for the same period, July one, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So here's the amounts that we're requesting in the middle column. Uh, the first column is what's currently available, um, that we need to draw ultimately over the life of, of the agency or the, the redevelopment agencies, the city's RDA successor. Uh, so we're looking for two point eight five million dollars, uh, to pay the bonds, uh, with interest. Uh, there's a about a quarter million for, um, administrative fees, four hundred, four million, four point one five million for the projects that are currently, uh, in, in engineering. And then, uh, about thirty thousand for other costs for a total draw of about seven point two eight million dollars. Uh, the recommendation of the staff is that the city council, as a successor agency, adopts the resolutions approving the ROPS and the administrative budget for the period of July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four and authorize the city manager to present the ROPS to this countywide oversight board for its consideration and approval. Uh, that's the end of my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much for that. Alicia, do we have any written or public comment on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now close public comment and I'll bring it back to my colleagues for comments and a, and, and or a motion.
We take both of these, um, results as one, correct? So I move to approve item D two, one and D two two as presented.
Second.
The motion.
Motion to approve item D two, items number one and number two, um, by, uh, Councilmember, uh, Stephen Montes, second by Councilmember, um, Temio Viegas. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temeja?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that report. We now move on to item D three, on update on the progress of Madera Transit Plan and request approval to extend phase two of the current agreement with the addition of tasks number six and task number seven. Marcella, do you have this item?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Let me share my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, today I'm presenting on the update, um, on the progress of the Madera Transit Plan and request, um, I'm requesting approval to extend phase two of the current agreement with the addition of tasks six and seven. On April twenty first, twenty twenty one, council adopted a resolution approving the agreement with the consultant, WSP USA for transit consulting services to develop the Madera Transit Plan. The, due to the complexities of the projects, staff requested approval to add a second phase of the contract with the consultant. And on July twentieth, twenty twenty two, council approved phase two of the service agreement with WSP, which included outreach and implementation of the revised plan. Today, outreach, um, has been completed. It began in September of twenty twenty two and it ran through November of twenty twenty two. It included six pop-up events and two community forums as follows. The pop-up events were held at the district fair, booths at the park, old timers parade, the Madera Community College, Pumagranit Festival, Pan American Center Presentation and onboard surveys. The forums took place at Madera County Transportation Commission's conference room as well as the City Hall, City Hall Council. The outreach events resulted in the following: distribution of three hundred flyers, two hundred and thirty three of which were in English and sixty seven were in Spanish. Seventy two surveys were completed. Seventeen comment cards were returned from the public. Two community forums were held. Four people attended, um, in person while rejoined via Facebook Live. And since, uh, or as of December twenty twenty two, the live stream, uh, the Facebook live stream has been viewed a hundred and forty six times. The proposed agreement or changes to the agreement, um, are as follows. The current agreement is scheduled to sunset on April of twenty twenty three. As the, as phase two of the plan evolved, it became apparent that the community desired a new bus stop at Walmart. As a result, staff is proposing to amend phase two of the agreement to include the following tasks. The first is task six, which is the Walmart bus terminal cost estimate. And the second is task seven, which is network implementation. So for task six, staff, uh, as part of phase two, staff requested a conceptual design, um, alternatives for a bus stop at Walmart. However, that did not include a request, uh, for the cost estimate for these designs. Uh, which is why at this point staff is asking for, for the inclusion of task six, which will include the Walmart bus bay cost estimate, um, and additional costs as can be seen in the table totaling approximately twenty thousand dollars. Task seven is, um, it was developed to ensure that Madera Metro's newly designed fixed route system is successfully implemented. It includes graphic development, customer communication and outreach, route scheduling, implementation, meeting and meeting materials. The, um, subtotal is fifty eight thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars for task seven. This will allow staff to continue working with our consultants, making sure that the community is, um, well aware of the all of the different changes coming to our fixed route, um, system, um, troubleshooting any concerns that may come forward, et cetera. The total, uh, the proposed amendment will increase the current agreement by approximately eighty thousand dollars for both of these tasks. Uh, the recommendation from staff is that council adopted resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with WSP USA to include the additional tasks six and seven for a total increase of seventy eight thousand, nine hundred and forty nine, forty five dollars and ninety nine cents. That concludes my presentation. I can, um, answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alicia, do we have any public comment regarding this item?
We do not, Mayor.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Mark. Um, now close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for, um, either questions, um, or a motion for item D three.
Mayor, this is Hilda. Uh, may I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, in, in looking at the staff, the, the report you just made, uh, it talked about adding the two tasks, but, and in looking at the agreement, uh, in, in your presentation, you also talked about extending the agreement. So I would recommend that if council wishes to proceed with approval of this agenda item, that it authorized, uh, us to add language to the agreement that's attached to the resolution to extend the agreement to July thirty, twenty twenty three, which is now to expire on April thirtieth.
That is correct. Thank you, Hilton.
Okay, any questions for my colleagues or a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm sorry. I think we don't have a.
Oh, that's fine. Good.
Can't see us through Zoom here, but anyhow, um, so I'm looking at task six and seven. Um, it, it requires for a bus stop at Walmart. Is that correct, Ms. Uniga?
Task six, yes, that's the, uh, bus stop at Walmart.
Okay, so when looking at the proposed or the, uh, totals there, we're, we're in that, uh, section. Is that, I mean, I see estimates, memorandums, materials, meetings, but is there a cost there to actually add that stop or is that not part of this? Um, part of this, uh, th- this total cost?
That is not part of this total cost. This total cost is so that we can provide, um, our engineers with, with a, uh, draft proposal from our consultants and then be able to bring that forward.
It just seems like there's a lot of consulting, but you know, I, I didn't, I didn't see any material that says, hey, this is the actual stop. We're going to pay this much for the stop. A lot of it, I just, I'm sorry, maybe, you know, just looking at the numbers there, it's a lot of meetings, estimates and stuff, but I didn't see where exactly is the cost for the stop.
Yes, you are correct. It does not include the actual cost of, of, um, placing the stop at Walmart.
And do we have that by any chance? Or is that something that still has to be consulted or?
Well, we would, um, be able to move forward in that process once we receive a cost estimate from WSP and consulted with our city engineers. Which is what our next, uh, step would be.
Maybe what really stands out is a cost estimate meeting and meeting materials. Uh, maybe if you can elaborate on that, I don't know what that is.
That would be the meetings from between city staff and our consultants and, um, the materials that they will be providing us in terms of the designs. Um, I do have Eric Bird from WSP also. Eric, is there something else you want to add to that, to tasks six point three? I'm sorry. I believe that's what you're referencing, correct, Councilmember? Task six point three?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, um, thanks, Marcella. Um, and hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Eric Bird. I'm a senior transportation planner with WSP, working on the project. And yes, that's correct. What Marcella had mentioned about, um, basically, uh, that line item is to ensure that we are having uh, communication between our team and the city to ensure that the estimates that we're coming up with is in line with, uh, what they're thinking and everything like that. Just making sure that there's collaboration, um, uh, as much as possible as we develop these estimates. Um, that, and that's kind of, uh, um, building off of what we've done so far with the project where we've come up with some different, um, proposals for the location. This is just coming up with a high level cost estimate tied to those proposals.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. It's just that I see a lot of these cost estimates separated. I just figured you'd have one, but it seems like there's different tasks for every single one of them. Um, and, and that's kind of what threw me off there. So thank you for answering that question, Eric.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Thank you, Councilman Argus. Are you finished?
I am done.
Okay, then I'll take it next. Marisala, question. Have we had, I know we've had conversations with Walmart. Have they agreed to take this stop on?
We've had one conversation with them and we have not followed up because we were wanting to bring it forward to council first and gain, get a council approval before we go back to council. They, the response we received from them, um, uh, was positive, uh, but we need to, we need to approach them again, uh, with an actual, uh, design request, which is what this would allow us to do.
Okay, and so the next question is for Eric. I'm on the same boat, I think, as Councilman Argus. Um, uh, seven point one graphic development, eighteen thousand. What graphic development? And the other question would be seven point three route scheduling for twenty eight thousand? Can you elaborate on those two?
Sure, yeah. For seven point one, so graphic development, that would be coming up with new, uh, new maps for the routes and coming up with new graphic content, um, for the routes themselves. So, um, coming up with, uh, as I mentioned, new maps and also route brochures as well, which, uh, Marcel, I believe those are handed out throughout the city, correct? Or are they on the bus stops or on the buses themselves? Sorry.
They both. We have, we would have them with the city and as well as on the buses.
Right. So since we are essentially changing the routes, then we need to update all of the, uh, visual elements for the, the routes themselves. So again, so new map, new maps and, uh, new brochures to reflect that. So that's seven point one. And then seven point three, so route scheduling. So a big part of this is not only, um, determining where the routes are going to go, but also when they're going to operate and determining things like frequencies, how often the buses are going to be showing up. So, um, that task, uh, seven point three is going to be essentially building out these new route schedules and determining timetables um, for when the buses will be showing up at the individual stops.
Okay, Eric, so my concern is we used to have, uh, bus stop at Walmart and we spent a lot of time redoing routes and graphic development in the city at all our other stops. So really, we're just adding, re-adding a stop that used to be there and it's going to cost twenty eight thousand dollars to re, to, to say that we're just stopping here at Walmart. I mean, the rest of our transportation on these thousands are going to just flow. It's just we're adding one additional stop. So I'm a little confused about why it's going to cost so much to add one stop to the ready, the routes that we already have. It's just adding the stop and it goes with the flow. Uh, when it stops here, it's going to stop there. It's just going to make one additional stop at Walmart.
Sure, and, and I can clarify that a little bit. So this project is redesigning the, the routes themselves. So we are redrawing routes. Um, the existing, we're changing the routes in, in terms of where they go and also, uh, planning on adding another route as well. So that's why you're seeing all these increasing costs is because we're not just, this is not just Walmart. We're looking at all the routes themselves and proposing, uh, changes to streamline the routes to make them go, um, to places that people are trying to get to and also make some changes to, uh, to help them operationally to ensure that they're, they're showing up on time, that they're showing up, um, as frequently as possible. So, um, I hope that kind of answers your question a little bit.
It kind of does, but we, we just did that, if I'm not mistaken, Marisala, less than a year ago. Did we not put money into redoing the route system and making it more efficient? And remember, right, we were making sure it did the college and we routed out certain stops at certain times. We looked into, we had consultants look into what stops were being used the most and what needed more, um, of more of a, a round, a red, a round robin to come to that stop more than the other?
Correct, and that is the current, um, transit plan that we are, that is still being discussed. Um, it hasn't, the, the revisions that you're referencing will go live in July. So so we haven't implemented the revised routes as of yet.
Okay, so we haven't minimized and we did budget money for brochures and for all of that. And if we haven't implemented, my question is, why is so much more being put to that when it's just adding one stop?
So the task seven isn't so the cost associated with task seven isn't only specific to the addition of the Walmart stop. It's for the entire route revision. Task six is strictly associated with the Walmart stop. If that makes any sense.
It does, but I don't think the staff report really gave us that information when we were looking at it. Because I kept reading it over and over saying, this is not clear to me. I'm not getting the picture here. I don't know if my colleagues felt that way, but that's how I felt with this report. And that's why I think you're getting several questions from it.
Okay, yeah, so for clarity, yes, task seven was for the is for the entire route revision.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I know you can't see us on here raising hands, but just the last question there, you did bring up an interesting point there, Marcella, is that Walmart has not confirmed that they would allow this bus stop yet, right? They need you to go through this cost estimate so that you can present them something for them to decide whether or not we can get that bus stop. Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Okay. And does Walmart has Walmart given us any reassurance or anything that if we provide this cost estimate that they would grant us permission for that stop?
It was a very positive phone call. We were very encouraged by by the Walmart representative who we spoke to. It seemed that they just needed to see something and then we could, you know, they would definitely willing to discuss it with the city.
Come, Marcella, if I may chime in, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to manage expectations, Walmart has not agreed to a stop. During the phone call, we we pitched out a couple of different concepts. And one thing that they asked for was to provide them something in writing that they can go back to their team, to their legal counsel, to their transit planners and to their site planners, and they would get back to us. So when we were discussing it in concept, they they being Walmart wanted something a little bit more fleshed out. And that's one of the things that we're trying to identify. We have a couple of different options we've been looking at. We obviously have, from the city's perspective, what best serves our community, but maybe what we would like maybe doesn't line up with Walmart, you know, something that Walmart would entertain. It's obviously challenging because it is their property and we would be going to them and asking them to modify potentially their their site layout and how they service their customers. And so we obviously want to be reasonable, but but we we want to be aggressive with our proposal. At the end of the day, our from our perspective, we're trying to best serve our constituents and our community members. And hopefully Walmart's open to that. But at the same time, before we pitched a concept out to them, we want to be sure that the community and that our council has an opportunity to digest it and provide some feedback because we wouldn't want to agree to something without having council support. And and that's why it's 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 a chicken and egg scenario. You know, do we go to Walmart, negotiate something and come back to council for council to say we don't like it? Or do we come to council and then Walmart? And so that's what we're trying to and it's a unique site because it it's it's probably the most traveled site we have. It's the most desired destination, and yet it's it probably already has the most traffic in the community. So when you combine all of that, it's it makes for a challenging situation, but and that's why we're here before the council this evening. So hopefully that sheds a little bit of light in terms of the process. And thank you, Mayor.
Any further comments? Seeing none, hearing none?
I'm gonna have to again go back to that. I don't know though, is thank you for explaining that. I guess I was just caught up on. You know, you said the chicken and egg. In my case, it would be, I think, you know, it'd be prudent for us to get something from Walmart, I think, in this case, to at least know that they're willing to entertain if we present some type of conceptual. Don't know what they're looking for. I mean, some something to show them that this is what we're planning to do, but I mean, I I'm not sure if this whole expense of seventy eight thousand is surrounding just Walmart. I understand that this is for the all route for the city. But did that did that modify because of that additional stop there and and added additional costs? So that's, I guess, my point is, we're trying to make sure we're prudent in the way we go about taxpayer dollars. And and we're not just saying, hey, let's throw this out there to Walmart and pitch the idea after eighty thousand dollars and then we'll see if the if it hits. I I don't know. I just that doesn't sit well. I'm sorry.
So it sounds it sounds like, I mean, because it is, it's a high dollar amount for the design for Walmart. And we don't know if Walmart even accept it, because so we might have to come back here. But one of the alternatives, it does say we can direct staff to complete a competitive bidding process. I don't know. Can we elaborate on that, what that would entail and if that would add itself more costs? Because it sounds like that's what we're kind of getting stuck on, the cost.
If we went out for a competitive bidding process, then we would look for a different consultant to perform this work. So it would it would add time to the project and we would just request other proposals, cost proposals for this work, to complete this work.
How much about how much time would that add?
Probably I would anticipate a minimum of about three months at least. By the time we put the RFP together and have it set out and then wait for the responses and evaluate them, it's it's several months.
And the RFPs could have come back higher.
They could, yeah.
Adding additional staff time. I don't I don't know. I'm not I'm not opposed to getting a more definitive answer from Walmart before we commit to the seventy eight thousand dollars, but we do have some alternatives if somebody wants to pitch one out.
So I don't know if Councilman Rodriguez's question got answered. I'm just missing because my will is returning. So the route rescheduling for the twenty eight thousands for the entire city, but was that is that here because of the Walmart stop? Is that why we're adding it?
Task seven would have been would have been here without would be here without Walmart, the Walmart request.
That's what I needed to answer. Okay, thank you.
So if if I may chime in, I've attended several meetings regarding the restructuring of our bus metro system. And I was very impressed by the amount of detail put into measuring the time that it takes for folks to get on the bus and complete their their transit needs. There's also a heavy need for folks to be able to, as Councilwoman Gairos talked about, going out to the the college and making sure that that they don't get on this endless loop of the the bus system as it is right now. And so I was very impressed. And for me, I think it would be important to, yes, go out and and talk to Walmart and not over the phone. I think that's that that's not a really good idea. I think we should have a formal meeting and talk to them, but at the same time, move forward with the with the funding. Because we can always pull back if they, in fact, are saying that they they don't want to have a a bus stop there. So I'm more in favor of approving the recommendation of our city staff and approving this item.
I have a question about task seven point one, where you talk about the delivery of the graphics. It says that it's going to be delivered digitally, but then I'm wondering why it's part of the cost estimate, the printiness. If it's going to be the responsibility of the city to print these.
Eric, I'll go for you.
Uh, sorry, you said for seven point one?
Yes, for graphics seven point one. It stated that deliver rules will be provided digitally and it'll be responsibility of the city to print these. And then we have factored into the cost estimate, a cost of for printing.
Sorry, I'm trying to see where that is for printing.
It'd be page nineteen. Or toward the end of the PDF on the reports.
Actually, sorry, I actually don't have that in front of me right now.
It's page six. Let's go.
Marcel, would it be possible for you to send me the the packet real quick so I could just take a look at this? Sorry, sorry about that.
No. I actually had another question. I had mentioned before when this item was brought up. I know I had heard from residents that their concerns were the time that it took for buses to arrive. So and also they wanted to see maps on the stops themselves with the schedules. So I'm only seeing this edition of a stop at Walmart. I wonder if that's something that also came up during the outreach phase and if there's going to be or if this is the end of any comments that the public can submit.
I guess I can I can speak to the first part in terms of graphic development. Yeah, so we will be developing developing new maps and also replacing, we'll be developing a template for replacing the signage at the bus stops themselves, which will then be sending to the city to to be completing that process of 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 replacing those bus stop signs. So they'll be reflecting the new information. And in terms of the 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 maps being placed at the bus stops themselves. Yeah, I'm not sure about that. Marcel, I might come back to you for that.
And I'm sorry, in terms of them being placed at the bus at the bus shelters?
Correct, the the bus, I guess the bus maps themselves.
Yeah, we do have, we will, we do anticipate putting in at the shelters so that there is access there as well.
Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. Don't we have the the routes already illustrated on the on the maps? I was seeing several and they were showing the new route formations. Don't you guys have that? That in a digital form that you could share out to to the communities so they could look at the route map themselves? I know that those were being presented during the meetings.
Exactly, exactly. So those were the ones that we took to the meeting. And we are, we have, we've made a couple of changes to those routes based on what we heard from the community as well to reflect the outreach that we've conducted so far. And we'll be taking those routes to council to take a look at and review. I believe on the February fifteenth meeting. So that's when you'll be seeing the updated draft, new routes.
I think that would be helpful for for our members to to be able to visualize and, you know, chime in and then the community calls to look at the routes and, you know, get their opinions also. The more outreach we do, I think, is the better.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've already seen it's been really positive so far. And it's been really great to have, you know, not just a traditional community forum, but also having these pop up events and go out where people already are and get and get the word out. So, yeah.
Yeah, I love I love getting on BART when I'm in the Bay Area and seeing the maps inside also, not just in the outside, but they're an important vision. They're an important visual. You know, you've got the color scheme and and people can look at it and say, okay, I got to get out here and I got to move transfer here. But yeah, those are all new and exciting things that I like about this project in addition to having brand new routes. And if we could have a side by side visual to for for informational purposes between now and the fifteenth of the old map configurations and then the new ones. So folks could look at that too. And then that way you can explain, oh, it took an hour to get from point A to point B back in the in the old routes. But this will improve. Anyway, just a suggestion.
No, that's that's great. Yeah, and that's what we were thinking for the the presentation on the fifteenth. Definitely. Yeah, thank you.
Eric, I sent you the report. So I think Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Proten was making a reference to information on page six of the scope of work.
Let me take a look at page six.
Marcela, would you mind sharing your screen and showing that so both the community and the council can see the language? If that's okay?
Can you guys see my screen or not?
Yes.
Right, so I I'm sorry, I'm not I'm not seeing where we had called out for printing. Maybe I'm just not seeing it on on my end.
Mayor Proten, so unclear, is this is this the what you were questioning here?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, so so could you, sorry, did you say that you saw a line item or something where we or we had a cost for printing?
Yeah, so right there, it says that it's going to be delivered digitally to the city printing. And then I saw in the cost estimate that printing is factored in. So I'm wondering what printing for what?
On this page here?
The next one.
Okay. Okay, so in there, so that's just, sorry, that's that's just a blank row right there. So you're not seeing a a cost there. Sorry about that. You're it's it's showing up in there, but there's no cost attached to it. There's only, as you can see in those gray rows at the bottom, there's there's an item for travel for if for us to come up and present in person. But there's nothing for printing in that in that row. Sorry for the confusion there.
Oh, I see.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any further questions and or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, seeing none? Just lost my courage. Oh, okay, item D three. Would like to make a motion that we approve item D three as presented?
With a recommended amendment to the agreement.
Oh, that's correct. I'm sorry. Could you read that again now? Hilda? For the record?
I will. Thank you. So the resolution, the staff report tonight and this resolution discuss extension of the term of the agreement. And so in the agreement that's attached to the resolution, a new section two would be added. Section eleven of the agreement, and I think it's entitled term from front of me, is amended to read as follows. And that would include the new termination extension date. And then section, current section two would become section three.
Right, is there a second? Second. Question by Mayor Garcia, second by Councilmember Viegas to adopt item D three. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gairos? No. Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Montes?
No.
Councilmember Evans? Councilmember Evans?
I believe she's freezing. We're having some Wi-Fi challenges here.
No, let's come back to her.
Mayor Protemeja?
No.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
And Councilmember Evans?
If she's freezing, Hilda, can she send a text message to our city clerk?
Can she raise her hand? Can she raise her hand that if she's voting yes? Or can you please unmute councilwoman, councilwoman Evans?
Or raise your hand for yes or no? Well, you still have a motion to the council.
She needs an opportunity to voice her vote, and if we can't have it, then you can announce the votes that we weren't able to.
Yes.
How are you voting? How about a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Councilman Evans, if you turn off your video, the audio may come through better.
Is that a no?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
No.
Motion fails with five no votes by council member Gallegos, Rodriguez, Montes, Evans, and Mayor Protemeja, and two yes votes by council member Vegas and Mayor Garcia. Motion fails.
Would anyone like to make an alternative motion?
Okay, so I'm moving the direct staff to go back to Walmart and get a definitive answer before we move forward with approving this amendment.
I'll second.
Did you say, I do wanna make sure I heard council member Rodriguez, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, to go back to Walmart and have a discussion? Alicia, would you call the role?
Council member Gallegos?
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez? Council member Montes?
Yes.
Council member Evans? I see your hand raised. Is that a yes?
Shaking her head.
She's.
She says yes.
Mayor Protemeja?
Yes.
Council member Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All righty. Thank you very much for that report, Marcela. We will now move on to item D4, Amendment to Utilize the Remaining Public Transportation Modernization, Improvement, and Service Enhancement Account Program Funds for Eligible Capital Projects within the City Transit and Fleet Maintenance Section.
Okay, this item is also mine. Thank you, Mayor. Going to share my screen. This is an amendment to utilize the remaining public transportation modernization improvement and service enhancement account program, PTMISEA, funds for eligible capital projects within the city transit and fleet maintenance system. So PTMISEA was created by Proposition 1B, the Highway Safety, Traffic Reduction, Air Quality, and Pop Security Bond Act of 2006. Of the nearly $20 billion available to transportation, 3.6 billion was allocated to PTMISEA, I'm sorry, to be available to transit operators over 10 years. The final appropriation of budget funds was made in the fiscal year 2014-15 state budget, and consequently, the city received 2.2 million of PTMISEA funds. That was combined with 3.2 million of federal funds. All funds were used towards the construction of the Madera Transit Center. The construction of the Transit Center was completed in April 2020. Since then, improvements have been made to the facility such as the transit center platform and landscape. When staff reconciled expenses, it was found that there was a remaining PTMISEA balance of approximately $840,000, which included just a little over $104,000 of interest earned. These funds must be expended by June 30th, 2023. Staff developed a list of proposed expenditures based on reasonable means and improvements to the transit system. Such improvements include prevented maintenance needs specific to the fleet maintenance yard, vehicle procurement to improve the current ADA paratransit service, fixed road amenities to add or enhance bus shelters, Madera Transit Center enhancements and modernization improvements at the Madera and Immortal Center. So this is a list of the proposed projects per function. Preventive maintenance includes fleet upgrades, including four post lifts for each bay, attire balancer. These are enhancements at our food yard. Vehicle procurement includes purchasing a couple of vans that would enhance or they could serve our dollar ride and ADA paratransit service. Fixed road amenities include amenities to our current shelters, which include purchasing a few additional shelters, as well as having some lighting at our shelters and schedule holders, et cetera. Facility improvements at the Madera Transit Center. This includes gate repairs and, this includes gate repairs and, oh, I lost the, lost the other one, but there is another one. There's a couple of discs of minor enhancements at the signage at our, at our current transit center. And the last one would be facility modernization at our intermodal. This is remaining balance of these funds, and this could include different upgrades, including exterior paint, exterior lighting, asphalt, et cetera. Staff has put together a list of possible enhancements for renovations of our intermodal center. The total is approximately $840,000. This recommendation from staff is that council adopted a resolution approving the submission of a corrective action plan with the Department of Transportation to authorize the use of the remaining $839,556 of these PTMISEA funds for other eligible capital projects within the city transit and fleet maintenance section. Staffs available for questions?
Alicia, do we have any public comment under this item?
We do not, Mayor.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and our motion.
I have a question, Mayor Garcia. Marcela, gate repairs, what, it's pretty new facility. Did something happen to our gates?
We, our manager out, our transit manager, not our transit manager, operations manager out at MV has indicated that it does not lock the way it should. It's constantly getting stuck, so it just needs to be repaired. So it's a rolling gate that's supposed to lock, and they've been having some challenges out there with that.
Okay, and the plexi floor, did we change our flooring in the facility?
No, that would be for our fleet, our fleet yard. That wouldn't be at the Transit Center.
Okay.
Yes, Marcela, if I may, Mayor, just to clarify, so when we're saying the fleet yard, that's at the public works yard where the mechanics work on the floor. So that's inside of the shop, that's actually in our public works yard. So on the staff report, there's a number of items that articulated that total about 287,000. Those items would be, and they would be placed over at the corp yard for the mechanic's use to make repairs of the buses. So hopefully that clarifies it, Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, can we bring it back for a motion?
I move to approve D4 as presented.
Motion to approve D4 as presented by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Vegas for item D4. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Montes? Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protemeja?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Marcela. We will now move on to item D5, Amendment to Existing Service Provider Agreement with ONE Transportation LLC relating to litter abatement in the Fresno River. Lieutenant, do you have this item?
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce him, Mayor. Good evening.
Okay, Mr. Lawson, absolutely.
You know, I have to have my mic time. You know that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I want to start off, this is not an increase at all. No increase. We already have the funding. So with that, about, last May, Chief Foss, when he was still with us at Public Works, created a contract with ONE who picks up, cleans up all the trash in the river in the city. And you notice the outstanding job that they've done, Public Works, our city manager, Cal Fire, just the outstanding job of how clean that river is. And thank God they did that with all this rain. We have beautiful free-flowing water and no flood issues. However, with that, when that, when that proposal was made, there was a cap put on the amount that could be paid to ONE. And so we're gonna be, for, come before you tonight to ask to lift the cap that was put on there. And I want to introduce Lieutenant Truckee. He's our lieutenant in charge of the investigations unit in code enforcement. And so that's why he'll be presenting tonight this ONE contract and the request to raise the cap because it all falls under his management. So with that, I would like to introduce Lieutenant Mark Truckee.
Thank you, Chief. Let me just get my screen here. So good evening, Mayor and city council members. I think Chief did most of my heavy lifting already, so I'll make this short and sweet. But we are here to seek an amendment to the current contract in regards to the allotted money.
I don't know if you can see it up here.
No, we can't see it on our end, Alicia.
Want to see it now?
No.
Here comes Mark.
Mark's coming?
Yes.
To the rescue.
Thanks, Eric. Was good now?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Ronaldo, you can't see it?
No. There we go.
There we go. That's it.
Okay, again, good evening. So we'll get started. So the city entered into an agreement on May 18th of last year with ONE Transportation to assist with litter abatement efforts in the Fresno River. It was set not to exceed 250,000 and set to expire on May 17th of this year. The total compensation provided to ONE is approaching that ceiling of the $250,000. We're asking to seek an increase in that ceiling to set the initial agreement with ONE. Without the increase, is likely the river will return to its poor condition, similar to what was found prior to the city's most recent efforts. In addition, if council approves the increased amount, staff recommends extending the contract term through June 30th of this year. There's, as Chief said, there's no impact to the city's 22 and 23 budget. This expense was anticipated and included in this year's budget. The budgeted increase to initial agreement totals $180,025. The city has offset costs by utilizing the awarded Clean California Local Grant Program. 200,000 of this grant was specifically allocated to litter abatement effort in the Fresno River. So far, the city has been reimbursed $80,625. Sorry, so our recommendation to adopt this resolution approving the First Amendment to the Service Provider Agreement with ONE Transportation for an additional services at a cost of $180,025 and an extension of the term through June 30th of 2023. As I stated, it's short and sweet, so I don't know if you have questions or concerns.
Excellent, excellent. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay.
And no one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Then I will bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or a motion.
I have a comment. Lieutenant Truckee, just for the public's aware, 180's cap doesn't say we might use it all, but that's what you're asking us for. Doesn't mean we might use it all by June.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And the chief gave his word that it wasn't be an increased run.
Right.
Did you have something, Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was just a comment.
I don't see any more hands raised. If someone would like to make a motion?
I move to approve D5 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion to approve D5 as presented by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Rodriguez. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Montes? Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protemeja?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members.
Absolutely, absolutely. We will now move on to item E, Administrator Reports. Item E1 is an informational report on the city's cannabis program. I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I sure do allow me to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And this item is before the council this evening at the request of council in the second meeting in December. This item is an informational report only, and no action is being requested of council this evening. Council may recall, we are in the midst of the cannabis application review process. The applications, we have recently completed phase two. We are moving on to phase three. Council may recall, I'm not gonna go into the details of phase one, those were previously presented to council, but all the applications were scored by HDL. All but one application, we received a total of 28 applications. All but one did not score the minimum of 90% to move on to phase three. Of those 25 of the standard applications, which is standard retail, received a qualifying score, as did the two social equity applications. With that, though, staff notified the applicants that eight, that the top 18 of the standard retail applications are moving on to round to phase three. And both social equity applications are moving forward to phase three. So of those that were not selected to advance, again, all but one of those received a score of 90 points or higher, but at some point you, we provided a cutoff, they were advised of their rights to appeal. Council had previously adopted a resolution establishing Council had previously adopted a resolution establishing the appeal fee. We prepared a request for proposal that went out to, to various hearing officers, that the hearing officer was selected by council recently. And the city attorney's office will be representing the city during those appeals. Today, three, three receive, or three appeals were received by the city by the deadline. So three will be moving forward to an appeal hearing. Those appeal hearings are anticipated at a take between four and six hours. Those appeal hearings should be exhausted prior to moving everyone forward to Phase Three because if the appeal, if the, if the appeal officer determines that, that, that additional points should be credited for any reason, then those were going to be added to the list to move forward to Phase Three. So again, you have to exhaust your administrative remedies for those prior to moving everyone forward. So in terms of Phase Three, two community meetings are anticipated. That may potentially be three meetings, but right now we're looking at two. At that point, those will be community meetings. We would notify the, the neighbors within a 300 foot radius of the property. At that point, that meeting is to allow people to attend. And can those meetings will do presentations? And that's going to provide us an opportunity to hear from the community to make sure that we didn't miss anything during our scoring. And I say we, it's by an extension HDL. And then at that point, what, once those meetings take place, we'll, we'll be advancing them to Phase Four. Phase Four being hearings by the city council. And again, those are going to be public hearings where the council is going to have the opportunity of selecting who's going to be awarded a cannabis application. So the appeal period closed. We received three appeals. The council recalls the, 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 the filing for, the filing per appeal is roughly a little bit north of $6,000. That is nonrefundable. And the cities, it, it doesn't, it, we're simply trying to make the city whole on that one. And those were the anticipated costs of city staff time as well as the hearing officer. So come with that. Again, and this item is an informational item and there's no action being recommended of council at this time. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Absolutely. Alicia, was there any public comments regarding this item?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. And a close public comment, bring it back to council for any questions or that you might have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. Ronaldo, thank you for the process of how this application goes. With that, did you have any dates more or less or hard dates as far as when we might, might see when we may get to Phase Four? I think that's my question. I think it's a question a lot of people's minds is when can we start granting those licenses?
We are going to schedule those appeal hearings as soon as possible. Unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity over the past couple of days to get with the hearing officer. A lot of this is going to be depend on, on her, on her availability, as well as our legal counsel's availability. And at the same time, we want to be sure that we're understanding of the appellant's availability. So we simply have to coordinate calendars. Again, every one of those hearings will probably be between roughly four to six hours of a here, of hearing time, not including preparation time by our legal counsel. And so unfortunately, council member, I don't, but as soon as we have the dates, I will provide those. And if I can have them for you at the next meeting for both the benefit of the council and the community, then I'll have that and I'll prepare that as an informational item as well. Simply allow me to get together with the appeal hearing officer as well as our, our legal counsel to make sure that our dates are lining up. Unfortunately, I just don't have specific dates on them. But as soon as I do, I'll share them with both the council and the community.
Thank you, Ronaldo. So on the staff report, I think you mentioned there was three applicants that met the appeals deadline? Did I hear that?
I think the staff report, council member, I think states two. Friday, after the publishing of the agenda, we received our third one, which was Friday. So as of, as of right now, it's three and closed. So again, so it simply had to do with timing. The council packet was completed on Thursday, the appeal came in Friday.
Perfect, thank you, Ronaldo. Maybe this question for Hilda. As far as appeals go, Hilda, do you have, based on, I, I'm not going to say experience, it's probably, I don't know if there's something that your office does, but what is the process with appeals? Does it take a month, two months? Can it go, can this drag on for some time or is there a set date based on our ordinance there that these appeals would be resolved by a certain amount of time?
There are timeframes in the ordinance and I'm not going to say what they are because I don't remember them right now. But there are timeframes. It's, they were designed to ensure that the process is streamlined while at the same time providing due process to the appellants. As your city manager has noted, there are three appellants. My office is working with HDL and staff to work through the process and get ready for the appeals. And there is a designated staff person that will be working with the hearing officer so that there are no expedite communications between the city representatives and the hearing officer because the hearing officer has to be independent. We, at this point, we, dates were given to the hearing officer and it is anticipated that the hearings can be held in February, but we still have not heard from the appellants as to their availability.
Thank you. And based on your experience with appeals and the processes and what's on the ordinance shouldn't allow this to drag on that much further, right? Based on the language that's on the ordinance.
Right.
Can't, you know, you can't, somebody can't just go out there and say, well, I'm not, I'm not liking what the result was in this appeal. Therefore, I want to continue to do a different, go through a different method or anything, right? Appeals have a certain process and, and a certain timeline as far as when we get those resolved, correct?
That is correct. And if you wish, I can send council the, the timeframes and how they work with respect to that, but that is correct.
Thank you, Hilda. Appreciate your, your comment. Thank you again, City Manager Ronaldo. Appreciate you putting this together and giving us an update.
Hilda?
Yes.
The, the, can the process be extended by an applicant getting rejected and then taking us to court? Would that have an impact on, on this process that Councilmember Rodriguez is talking about?
In the event there's court action, those would be taken out of the process. I don't think the city should be held hostage while there is one appeal through the court system.
Okay, my answer is that. Another thing, Ronaldo, you, you mentioned the cannabis, standard cannabis. Do, do, was, does that include any? Because you mentioned social equity, does that include any of the? How was it, what was that? Vertical, was it the vertical or?
Okay, no, Mayor, we did not receive any vertical integration applications. I think the city was very hopeful that we were to receive hopefully one or two. With that being said, we can still receive those because there was no timelines given on those. So one of those in theory could walk in the door tomorrow.
Okay.
And so we're very hopeful. We still have people making inquiries about that, but today we have not received an application, Mayor.
Yeah, that's interesting because we went round and round about that. We didn't get one applicant. It's interesting. Well, hopefully they'll circle back.
Absolutely.
If there are no further questions, then we can close out this item? All righty, informational only. Item E2, Mayor's appointments to outside boards. Alicia, do you have this item?
Yes, Mayor, I'll introduce this item and pass it back to you if that's okay. So this item is to approve a minute order. Mayor, you will be making appointments this evening to outside boards, commissions and committees. Each appointment will be for a primary and an alternate position for each board commission, outside board commission and committee. And I'll now pass it back to you.
Did everybody get a copy of that today? Members?
The new one or the old one? We just got the old one.
Oh, so you haven't not had chances to see, see the new one? The one that's completed?
No, that wasn't provided to Council Mayor. It was only the, the last year's, I'm sorry, the previous year's appointments that was included in the packet.
Okay. So maybe it's a little unfair to go through that process without them having a visual. We can table this item for our next meeting. And that way everyone can look at the, the list, look at the dates included. And then we can, we can bring it back. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I mean, yeah, I just. I mean, you don't, do you want to at least try and see if people?
I can't, I can't hear you, brother.
If you want to at least try, see if people are amenable. So we're going to have to bring this back. I mean, I'm not opposed to tabling it, but I think, I think everybody's pretty familiar with the dates and the times. I think we're all serving on boards and commissions right now, outside boards and commissions.
Alicia, would you like to share your screen on that with the list?
Give me one moment, Mayor. Let me pull that email up earlier today.
And I do apologize for getting that list out late as I did, being out of the country and not being able to get myself organized with that. And we're barely getting this done now.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, it's a little smallish. Maybe if you could enlarge. There you go, that's better. So there are some minor changes. There's not a lot. I've kept mostly everyone in what they were doing before. I had a problem with Mayor Pro Tem Mejia because I understand that you work during, during the hours of, normally people are making, making these meetings. But I have no problem with anyone switching these appointments. If someone wants to do it and they want to do it between themselves, that's certainly understandable. I don't think we could see, oh, yeah, okay, here we go. Has everybody gone through the list? Are you able to see the list?
Mayor, just for clarification, on, on the list, it's really only the, the top section that you make appointments to. The appointments to Lafco and the appointments to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District are made by the City Selection Committee. The City Selection Committee is a committee established by statute and it is comprised of the mayors of, of Chowchilla and Madera. So tonight, the only ones that are, are at issue or subject to consideration are the, the top section.
Okay. So one, two, three, four, five, six. So the six at the top?
Hilda, please correct me if I'm wrong. He can make the recommendation, it's my understanding, to the Lafco and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution. And then the City Selection Committee takes those recommendations. That's what I understood with talking to the, to Lafco and the other committees. Okay.
Is someone speaking? Because I can't hear.
Hilda, I, I apologize, we couldn't hear you on Zoom.
Okay, the government code provides the process for Lafco and for the San Joaquin Valley Protection District. And it is not by direct mayoral appointments, it's made by the selection committee. That's by statute and I can send them the, the code section.
Okay, then if you, yeah, we should probably share that.
Yeah, if they want, you know, but that's not what the law says.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I, I have a question as well. So the Arts Authority, is that on here? Is that something that we make an appointment on?
That's a. That's a separate recommendation.
I think it's a recommendation. It's just always been a vote from the council.
Correct, it's, it's a separate appointment.
The, whenever it's a JPA or a separate entity, then that, that agreement, the Joint Powers Authority agreement, then that's, that's an exception to the state law that says the mayor makes an appointment. So it's pursuant to that agreement.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, or Hilda, at this time, the only thing that's coming up for recommendation or approval are the six.
The top six.
Top six, okay.
That is correct. And, and he's, his appointments are noted and you have the authority to approve them as presented or to make changes to any one of them.
And I think the mayor had asked if there was any changes to that. I'm not sure if any one wants to maybe move this for a next meeting or if you're amendable to what's happened today, then maybe everybody knows.
Jose, could you speak a little louder into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What I said was the items before us today are the first six items on the appointment worksheet, right?
Correct.
And that's what I, I said earlier, if any, if anybody had any recommendations or changes and do we want to leave this for a later time or do we want to go through this today? Is there any?
The, like I, like I said earlier, I made very minimal changes. I did want to give others the opportunity to serve on a different board and commissions. And that's why I made those, those separate modifications. I think it's important since we're all serving on the city council that we are able to learn and associate with other, with other community and county, county members. But like I said, I, I have no problem if two of these appointees want to switch and, you know, move on to do something else, then, you know, I don't have any problem with that.
I think it's best that we table it.
But again, that would be an agreement between the two that would like to switch. Like so, for instance, Mayor Pro Tem Mejia wanted to switch with Councilmember Evans. And they mutually agree to that, then I don't have a problem with that.
Mayor, I think it looks like your original recommendation is probably going to be what everybody wants to do is table this so that we can actually get a look at it and look at our.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that. I have no problem.
Need a motion? Move that we table this item to the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. We can do that. Alicia, did we go through public comment on this?
There's a motion to table, so there's no public comment.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you very much. All those in favor, well, Alicia, would you call the roll call vote on the tabling of this motion?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All righty. We will now move on to item E3, Support for Local Public Health Emergency Declared Upon Closure of Madera Community Hospital. I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Allow me to share my screen. So, Mayor, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So the item before you this evening, but Zoom unexpectedly, I don't believe that's mine. Hopefully not. If I'm getting kicked off, I'll jump right back on. So this item can be for you is regarding the closure of Madera. Is regarding the closure of Madera Community Hospital, obviously. Hey, Council, I apologize. It kicked me off. Can?
We could hear you.
Is that a visual?
Okay.
You just don't have your screen. If you can work on getting your screen back up.
Okay, come let me do that. I apologize. It kicked me off. Okay, yes, sir, about that. And the item before you, it's it's a couple of different items happening all at once. Obviously, this item has received a tremendous amount of both regional and statewide. Rest coverage whenever you have closure of the hospital. It's always a challenging period for both the community, for acute care, but also for its employees. And we would anticipate that it's going to have an enormous impact on our local economy. And it's not allowing me. Here we go. So. So the item can be for the council this evening is to receive an informational update on the closure. To consider an adoption of a resolution supporting the local emergency declared by Madera County. And to determine the city's position on exploring potential options. Obviously, this is a law for the council to digest. We, while the hospital closure was announced at the tail end of December. Here we are. It's the first time that this council has met sense in. And council is not going to have all the information it probably needs this evening, just like a staff. We don't have all the information to provide you. Because it's a fluid situation and it's evolving. I wouldn't say daily at this point, but there's a lot of movement on the item. And I would anticipate that this is a long term. It's more of a marathon, not a sprint in terms of the city's role. So as the council is very well aware, this past summer, Madera Community Hospital informed the council that they were experiencing significant financial hardship and they did request a million dollars of ARPA funding. As as was alluded to in today's presentation regarding the Avenue thirteen Emergency Repair. Council, at staff's recommendation, allocated 100% of the ARPA funds for the sewer and the water system. Roughly $16 million, I'm sorry, $17 million going to sewer. And then the remaining 6.1 million or so to the water system. Madera Community Hospital, back in August, stressed the need for for funds to to cover operating costs. Which they had emphasized were largely caused due to the pandemic. Through that process. Madera Community Hospital was exploring an affiliation with Trinity Health, the parent company of St. Agnes. In the last bullet point, we talked about it a few minutes ago. Since the meeting in August, city staff, myself and the mayor included, had attended several meetings with key stakeholders, including our state senator. Our Congressman Costa at the time, who who was the city's representative. And through the efforts of Senator Caballero and Assemblymember Bigelow, they they were able to secure $5 million of state funding. Not only that, they helped expedite some outstanding payments for services rendered to the hospital. And the exact number escapes me, but it was in the multiple million dollars. More recently, going back to December the 23rd. Trinity Health announced or informed, I should say, in the hospital that they were not going to continue. The with affiliation agreement immediately thereafter, actually on December the 23rd. The hospital informed its employees that the hospital would be closing. We, the city was notified the prior afternoon, on the afternoon of December the 22nd. There's obviously a lot of information that goes into every one of these. And a staff, we would be more than happy to discuss what the information that was related to to us. But again, a lot of this has been talked about. In great detail, both by local media and in various meetings. So the hospital closure is obviously going to pose a serious threat to acute care in our community. Obviously, residents are going to be left without an emergency room, which is obviously critical for labor and during either to treat trauma, for labor and delivery. Or for any other type of emergency. Unfortunately, the closure is probably going to only can leave the most vulnerable population in a more vulnerable position. There's obviously sometimes people that have slightly more resources, they can potentially travel to either Merced or Fresno for care. Unfortunately, we do have a large portion of our population is underserved to begin with, even even with the hospital being here. And now without having the hospital here, it's just going to create a lot more challenges for those community members. It's anticipated that there is going to be significant increased response times for for medical services. It's also anticipated that surrounding hospitals are going to experience increased patient volume whenever you close a hospital. The need doesn't go away. It's just going to go elsewhere. And obviously, it's going to create tremendous challenges for our city, for both distress ambulance, for our police officers. And for our fire department providing first aid or for or for medical clearances for people that they interact with. So subsequent to the hospital's announcement, there was a meeting the following week, which several council members attended. I spoke on behalf of the city via Zoom. Since then, I attended a second Board of Supervisors meeting last week. Madera County has issued a local state of emergency. Fresno County also issued one, partly due to the closure of the hospital. And Congressman Costa, the congressman-elect, who's now our Congressman Duarte, submitted letters to various federal agencies articulating the need for additional resources to to either to to try to reopen the hospital or to provide services. Or to try to provide acute care here in our community. There's been a lot of hours that have been allocated to this. Immediately following the hearing of the closure on 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 December the 22nd. City staff immediately reached out to State Senator Caballero. Assemblymember Esmeralda Soria with council, with different stakeholders and community partners. And we were scrambling to do whatever we can do to try to either identify additional funding or to see what can possibly be done. At the Board of Supervisors meeting. It was it was stated that the hospital would need roughly $55 million. Additional dollars, I should add, to to keep the doors open for a year. The hospital has been stated as losing between $2 million and $2.5 million per month. So again, that's $2 to $2.5 million per month that they're currently losing. And then they do have an outstanding loan that they obtained from Trinity Health for approximately $15 million. And that's, I believe, where the number of $50 to $55 million comes into play. And again, that's to keep it open within one year. My understanding is that there's been a tremendous amount of of assumptions as to why Trinity Health walked away. At the end of the day, I'm not confident that we'll really ever know and and it's a private entity and they probably don't have to disclose it. Some some reasons we've been informed is, again, the hospital is losing several million dollars per month. At the same time, the reimbursement rate, the existing reimbursement rate rate or some. There are some restrictions with that and their inability to make changes that they deemed appropriate was one of the reasons that was cited. I have not heard of that personally from Trinity Health. Those are some of the reasons that local media has has relayed. So this evening. Staff is staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution supporting Madera County's declaration of a local emergency. So again, so this would be in support of theirs. And then also to to, you know, here, it says determined, but it's obviously considered or make a recommendation for discussion purposes. To to try to determine what the city's role is in partnership with the county for some kind of joint evaluation of of potential options for a future hospital here or some type of acute care in 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 either the city of Madera or Madera County. At the board meeting last week, the city, the Board of Supervisors unappropriated. I think was the term they used, or it could have been unallocated several million dollars. And some of those funds are going to be used to provide indigent care. And the Board of Supervisors also provided their C O. Some leeway in exploring potential options. They did not allocate a specific dollar amount, rather what they indicated is that to use funding that with is that's within his spending purview during a non-emergency. And unfortunately, don't have that dollar amount. So for example, here in the city of Madera, the city manager has $50,000. That's the cap. Actually, I take that back. I think it may be $60,000. I should know that considering council just approved that resolution back in December. And but again, any studies at this point are are really at the surface level, just to consider potential options. We know Madera is not the only community that's experiencing challenges. Telleri recently went through this, I think in 2017. City of Watsonville, I think, recently experienced something like this. So there are some subject matter experts out there. My understanding is the county is going to be retaining those. And at the Board of Supervisors meeting, the supervisors did allude to is the city gonna engage and what's our role? It's it's going to be a fluid situation, and I think this evening. Council can obviously make a determination, authorizing city staff to to engage with the county. Or to simply say, state something very comparable to what the county did to say, okay, city staff, you can spend whatever the city manager's limit is. And see what that gets us, or maybe we can start that dialogue. At this point, anything above that cap would have to come back to council. And obviously, that's that's part of a much bigger discussion. So again, so this is a very fluid situation. I think it's a very unfortunate situation. There's no clear path and there are no clear answers at this point. I wish I could sit here before the council and the community and tell you that we have it all figured out, that this is a very complicated issue with a lot of moving parts. And with the amount of time that we've had, it's moved very fast. A couple of options that have been discussed. Is potentially exploring options for a district hospital or a CFD. And a district hospital would you would have an identified geographic area. There would be a some kind of assessment or some kind of affiliation with a geographic area. And those funds would go to to establishing a district hospital. For example, I'm not a subject matter expert, but the district itself would probably still have to have a healthcare provider. So there was probably to be some kind of affiliation with a healthcare provider and the district hospital would provide some some financing of that. But obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to that. And so with that, I think that concludes my presentation. I know I spoke fast. It's a lot of information. I want to be respectful of everyone's time and I I'm going to look over to Hilda on my screen and Hilda, did you have any comments or points of clarification?
No, I think the the item on the resolution, I think that's pretty clear cut for council's consideration and approval to support the the county's declaration of of emergency. I think on on number three, I think right now, the way it's on the agenda, it's basically to give you authority to to participate and talk with the county, find out what they what they want to do, what their thoughts are, have various meetings in that regard. But nothing really more than that until you come back to council. Your authority for expenditures is limited to contracts, not to do other kinds of expenditures.
Okay, thank you, Hilda. And so I do want to add a point of clarification. I have been engaged with the county to date, and so we we have had exploratory discussions. We've had multiple hours of them where we've thrown a lot of different concepts on the table just to see if it's even worth exploring. And I think from 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 the bureaucrats in the room, we think it's worthwhile to endeavor, but at the same time, we don't want to get too far ahead of our skis without having, from my perspective, the city councils. You know, clear direction on that. And the Board of Supervisors has provided their C O with direction to move forward. But 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 without spending a tremendous amount of money, again, it's simply exploratory at this point. So thank you, Hilda, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Alicia, do we have any public comment on the side?
We do not, Mayor.
And no one on Zoom. Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for discussion or comments. Regarding the recommendation to support the local public health emergency declared upon the closure of Madera Community Hospital by Madera County.
Mayor Garcia, I'll go first. The first comment I want to make is I am in favor of our manager meeting with the county to study a subject matter on how to create a district hospital in the city. I just want to make a comment that you have been contacted by the CEO of Madera Community, asking for us to reallocate ARPA funds. I think this council, and I was very clear the other day at the Board of Supervisors meetings, not a taxpayer dollar will go to Madera Community if we don't see three years of audit, financial audits from them. But with even out without the financial audits, Madera Community has closed. They're filing bankruptcy. I don't understand why the CEO is contacting you. I feel that I'm hoping my colleagues are with me that if she does contact you, please have her come see this body, this council, and ask us about reallocating funds, ARPA funds for the hospital that's no longer there. If we do allocate one penny, I think it's to something that we need to create, something bigger and better for our community and for our citizens that we can manage and have an oversight to make sure that we're taking care of everyone here. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, add a point of clarification, if that would be appropriate?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilwoman Gaios. You you gleaned on something that you were you state something that I happened to just gloss over and I apologize for that. The CEO of the hospital did reach out to me. I'm going to say about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, requesting that the city, that the city once again consider reallocating its ARPA funds or some of its ARPA funds. The hospital did provide some audited financial reports about 10 days ago. City staff has not had an opportunity to review those. And there's a lot of reasons why. One of them, before we spent a considerable amount of staff time doing that. I wanted to come back to the council and simply highlight that they, again, are requesting the allocation of funds. I did speak with the hospital vice chair, Stone Man Freddy, right before the council meeting, and he apologizes for his absence this evening. He did want to attend the council meeting. Unfortunately, he's at a funeral. And so he did plan on attending. I can let him know that I would inform the council and the community that unfortunately, he can't make it. And again, city staff has not gone through their financials, but they, once again, they did request a million dollars of ARPA funds. The reason that we didn't want to go through the financials is because I believe the council, the two times prior to to this request, council had extensive dialogue and gave staff direction. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Just to clarify, City Manager Rodriguez, did they give you three years of their financial audits?
I believe, Councilwoman Gaios, they may have. I apologize. Since since that happened, I've been dealing with the sewer issue and and a lot of rain. And so I I just have not had an opportunity and and our finance director, interim finance director, has has been dealing with some stuff that's come up. And and she just hasn't had an opportunity to review them either.
My question is, why why are we pushing staff time onto these financials when the hospital is filing bankruptcy? What would the $1 million do if we are going to put money to something? It needs to be something new that can be managed. And a beneficiary, a benefit to this community. I don't understand why we're throw we would throw even think to entertain throwing one more penny at an organization or agency that's filing bankruptcy. $1 million is not going to save them. $5 million is not going to save them. They're $15 million. I lean on that facility right now before they can even open the doors. So that is something I think my colleagues need to be aware and the community needs to. So that is something I think my colleagues need to be aware and the community needs to be aware of. Um, that we want to help. We want a hospital here. That's important for our our members, for the for the businesses that want to come and the businesses that are here. But to put one more penny into something that was mismanaged, that didn't come to fruition to do good in this community, um, I don't understand why they're out asking us for money. Because I'll tell you right now, this body right here, if we were losing two point five million a day, our city manager would not be in that chair and you would be coming after us and we wouldn't be sitting here either. So I don't know why the CEO is contacting you where I don't know why she's sitting in that chair, losing two point five million. I'm just very passionate about this because I sat at meetings and I've heard and we've had senators, congressmen, assembly trying to help us out to do better, and we want to do that. But for her to come back and even the vice president to come back and say, we need this money, for what? We have asked for nine months, for what? And that money is not going to do any good. They need millions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna jump in. You're next on the list. Um, so I'm gonna agree with with uh Councilwoman Gagoz. I do believe that we do need to support the county's declaration of a local emergency and direct staff to um to get better information before we start allocating any any further dollars um to the situation. Again, I I think we all understand the gravity of the situation and the impacts that it's going to have on the community. But we also understand that we have a responsibility to this organization as well and to our residents. Um, and before we just say, you know, here's a here's a million bucks um for, I don't know, whatever you're going to use it for, uh, we want to better understand where that's going to go, um, what the plan is. But I did have a question specifically regarding um the district hospital. Um, you said it's going to be set up like a CFD. Is that going to take a ballot measure? Is that gonna, so it would take an official ballot measure? It's not going to be kind of how we do our CFDs here where we do it in-house, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at that point, that'll be essentially the residents deciding if they want to tax themselves.
Correct.
So um, that, I mean, that answers my question. But yeah, I think, uh, you know, again, I agree with uh Councilwoman Gagoz that we do need to be part of the conversation and we will participate and we want to help as much as we can. But we can't just jump in without understanding um the full impacts of what is being asked of us. Um, I just, I mean, I think we we talked about twenty thousand dollars today uh on buses. Um, so when you when you up it up a little bit to a million dollars, I think you're going to have uh a more thorough conversation. And it's not going to be as easy uh for this council to to let that go. And that's that's my opinion. Those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, I know you don't see the lights out here, but uh there's a couple more lights. Um, I just kind of want to echo what uh both of my colleagues said here. I I think uh not having uh a measurement of accountability of where those funds are going, it's really hard for us to say, especially to the public, hey, we need a million dollars. We're gonna uh forego that money to the hospital, not knowing where that's going, right? Obviously, this is a private nonprofit agency. Uh, a lot of times, those financials are not made public. So I think when you scrutinize us as the uh body that that serves here as your um watchers of the money, I think you want to also know that uh, you know, everything that we do with every penny, you want to know that it's accountable, right? Like uh Councilmember Montes mentioned today, twenty thousand dollars over this bus route at Walmart. You know, obviously, we we probably made it a lot bigger, but we also want to make sure that everything's accountable accounted for. So I I certainly agree that participation, I don't know what that, to what degree that that participation is, if it's monetary or if it's more of the talks, try to see if we can come back uh and maybe talk about a possible district. That's great. I know that uh there were some comments at the uh board of supervisors that may may have misled the the supervisors thinking that we would forego some of our ARPA funds um and and re re uh evaluate how we 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 set those funds there. So I think it's important that we um have the discussion, participate. But at this time, you know, does the city, Arnoldo, receive any money from the state for 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 that incident that you talked about earlier? Or is that something that the county uh receives?
I know Councilmember Rodriguez, the city does not receive any of those funds. Um, unfortunately, I'm not as familiar with the county funding and there's um um and streams of revenue. But the city does not receive any fund. And again, uh, before, you know, again, uh, just point of clarification if it's okay, council member. Um, I've been engaged with the county, but we but before we got too far down the road, I I simply wanted to make sure that I had council's authorization to continue because again, it it's spending staff time, going to meetings, and you know, they're simply exploratory at this point to say, is this even something that's worth exploring? Um, council, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, for for sure. I mean, I think the participation, Arnoldo, I don't know if that was specific as far as, is it money? Is it conversations? Uh, because I I don't think you spell that out in your report. So I think that's important to know. Uh, are you talking about a certain dollar amount that you're asking this council to forego for for that particular uh participation? Um, so I think it's important to know what exactly is our is our role in this this conversation? And what would you like the city's role to be? Or at least what is a county envision that we we participate? Um, again, we are a a agency that provides services, and I think we've laid that out. Uh, and I don't know that medical care is one of those, but we certainly need a hospital. That that is, uh, I think uh everybody that's in the room or that was at that meeting knows that the the need for a hospital, at least emergency care, is is essential. Uh, and when that is not present, and obviously, that 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 certainly is a a an emergency, uh, or at least a um, a a a time where we need to declare some type of emergency because it's going to put a strain on a lot of the services that provide medical attention, right? So um, I would think that you'd want to at least specify what the participation is. I I certainly don't have a problem when you're going out and engaging. Um, I would encourage that and then come back. If the district hospital is the solution, then I think we 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 move on that. But at the end of the day, we allow the residents to decide whether they want this or not and supported or not, no different than a school, I think.
Yeah, I think it's uh important to remember what Hilda said. This time, um, our city manager is not asking for money to to send over to Madera Community Hospital. Um, particularly not anything here like a million dollars, which would be a waste of our or our funds. It would go down a rabbit hole. I think what we're looking at tonight is the resolution for support of of Madera County's declaration of local emergency. I think that's the issue before us, and I'd like to hear someone make a motion so that we could adopt the resolution supporting Madera County, you have without any monetary uh attachment to it.
Mayor, um, by the way, Mayor, uh, when you speak, there's a lot of noise with your microphone. But uh, you're correct, uh, the the resolutions before the council and also uh, the coun- the city manager is seeking uh authority to have discussions, explore, not go out, spend money, but at least have discussions with the county and find out what they're proposing. And anything that that does sounds feasible or practical, he will be bringing back to you for for review and consideration and approval.
Mayor, you also have comments. You have Mayor Proton Mejia punched up, wanted to give comments.
Okay, Mayor Proton?
I was very, um, you know, shocked. Um, I think I share the community sentiment, and this was a very hard blow for us as a community, especially during the holidays. Um, as Senator Caballero said during one of the meetings, uh, we need to look for solutions and coming together is um is important for us. And I think that this is one way of us coming together and working together to find solutions and move forward. So I would be in support of this, um, supporting the declaring the local health emergency. And um, I think you have a comment from Councilmember Evans.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes, can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment in reference to um Councilwoman Diegoz. I'm in such agreement with her. Um, it was sad to have community members contact me to say that they were willing to gift from the city of Madera at least twenty to fifty dollars out of their own paychecks every month just to try and keep the hospital open. So in reference to the the funds as far as the city manager is concerned, I'm in total agreements with that. And also, we don't need to spend another dime, I'm sorry, on the hospital and just trying to do anything, try to keep it open. It's already closed. They've already filed um bankruptcy. And we need to move forward, if nothing else, to try and have the district hospital. If it has to come back for a vote, I've received a number of calls from individuals that are willing to do whatever. So if that's what we need to do in reference to having a district hospital or even having something else to come about, then let's move forward with that and let's go ahead on and give our city manager the monetary amount that he needs to to be able to continue on.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted before I motion, um, Hilda saying he's not asking for money, but it's not our city's forte, it's not the county's forte. And you know me, I'm not real big on consultants. But we're gonna need to get a consultant who knows about districting, CFDs, to purchase um, some type of hospital building or whatever it is, or the process to file the paperwork. So I'm not saying that we need to throw a lot of money to it, but I think we should give um, our city manager is 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 very strict and watches every penny as we do up here. So if it's um, if we give him a cap of what he already has to use on top of the county to get a consultant to give us that information on how much it's going to cost us to district and to put out a vote or put it on the ballot, that that's when he'll come back to us. Because I know it's not going to be close to what his cap is. It's probably going to be much more. So I'm gonna motion um to approve E one and adopt the resolution supporting Madera Community's declaration of a local emergency. E three, oh, E three, sorry, E three. Thank you, Councilwoman and Councilwoman. Um, to the public risks involving with the closure of Madera Community Hospital and um, to give our city manager his cap of sixty thousand to help make the joint between the county to out venture of what we need to do to district a new hospital.
So if I hear you correctly, uh, Councilmember
Is a lot.
Are are you modifying item three, right? Because now you're adding
Yes.
Dollar amount.
Yes. If so need.
And if I may, Mayor, was that your request, Arnoldo? I just want to make sure. Is that a request that you made?
Councilmember Rodriguez, I think, um, so can that wasn't a direct request? It 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 was more for a direction. Uh, however, while I obviously appreciate Councilwoman um, Councilwoman Gagoz's confidence in me, um, I I a lot like can this council, um, you know, is very conscious about how the city spends public dollars? I think because again, I don't think this is going to be a um, you know, a hundred meter dash. I think it's going to be a marathon. I think it would be appropriate to to get direction from council this evening to engage with the county. And then to maybe at this point, I go back to the county, I kind of see where they're at to see if they have any bids or any potential proposals. Uh, and then at that point, come back to the city council to request potential funding for that. Um, I wouldn't expect the council to can to give me a blank check that um, that I don't think would be the wise thing to do. And I don't think it's fair to put the council in that position. Um, and so while again, while I um am very grateful for ha- having the confidence or can that the council has confidence in me to say, go spend sixty thousand dollars, I do think that it'd probably be more appropriate to get a dollar amount, um, just at least a conceptual number from the county to see where they're at and then come back to the council to have clear direction from the city in terms of of, you know, what the county's thinking. And i- it's another potential option would be potentially to have a joint meeting between the council and the board to 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 discuss this issue that's going to impact all of us. Um, and um, I think the community is thirsty for information. And I think that could potentially provide a venue for unfortunately, a lot of frustration, but at the same time, it's probably something that needs to happen.
So we've gone back to the original motion for B three?
My motion as it is, um, just because it's there doesn't mean, just like the river, just because they have a hundred eighty thousand dollars doesn't mean they're going to spend it. They're just going to use what they need. So it's there if needed um, to match the county if they're going out just to get a consultant to give a highlight, to come up with a report. I would like to leave my motion there.
Ju- just a point of clarification, the city manager already has that authority based on his agreement, right? I mean, is there a work, so I mean, I think if if he needed to come back and ask for additional, then I think I would be open to that. But right now, it seems like um, item E three as presented certainly serves a purpose of what he had explained. I'm not sure if that's
Yeah, but if you know our city manager, if we don't put it out there, he's not going to and again, a process, we'd have to wait till a meeting agenda is it. So if we put it there, he has that ability and he will come back and brief us.
Councilwoman Gagoz is right. I I would not spend sixty thousand dollars without having clear direction from council.
So is there a second to the motion to accept E three as submitted?
I'll second the motion.
So I'm sorry, what what is a second to? Because you had a second with the money?
Sixty, it's sixty thousand and that's what his authority is. So the contract. But he said that he's not going to do it without coming back to it, so.
So the money, the res- the resolution is for emergency declaration and not to add money? If if the manager needs money, then he'll come back or?
My motion was to um approve E three with a resolution and give the city manager authority to do a joint with the county if needed to go out and get a consultant, whatever is need for a hospital, a districting hospital.
I I'm gonna, I'm sorry, but I'm just gonna go with the original uh item E three. I think that covers most of it there. I think I'm looking certainly come back. So that way, we don't add more language to what's on that.
Well, that's my motion. You guys can shoot it down.
Yeah, no, I I can't support that either. I'm I'm here to vote for the declaration in support of, that's how I'm going to vote. So um, Mr. Montes, did you, did you still want to su- uh support Councilwoman Gagoz's motion?
I think you have a motion and a second, so it'd be probably best for us to go through that motion. And if it doesn't prevail, then we can do another motion. Correct.
I just want to be clear with your with your second, then you're asking for the funds?
Yes.
In addition to?
I seconded her motion, yes.
Basically, Mayor, it's uh what's on your, the recommendation on the agenda report, adopting the resolution supporting the county's declaration and number and then uh authorizing the city manager to uh convene and participate with Madera County in evaluating po- potential options. Uh, and then she added uh including authorizing the city manager to expend up to sixty thousand dollars in those efforts.
No, no, I was still gonna, okay, so let's call for, let's call for a vote. Um, Alicia, would you uh, and anyone else have any comment before we move on? Okay. So there's a motion to approve E three with the addition of monies to be expended by the city manager? Um, Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gagoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Uh, no.
Motion passes with five yes votes and two no votes by Councilmember Rodriguez and Mayor Garcia.
Anyway, we will close this item out and move on to item F. Councilmember Reports Announcements Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for the action. Councilmember San Vegas?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just um wanted to do another shout out to our wastewater treatment uh team, Gabriel, Peter, and Anthony, who stayed there day and night uh protecting that sewer line until it could be repaired. And um Lieutenant Gonzalez, oh, excuse me, Sergeant Gonzalez. And Lieutenant Gonzalez, oh, excuse me, Sergeant Gonzalez, who made sure that they had coverage with PD with some crazy drivers out there. And a shout out to everybody here that has stuck with us all evening to almost nine o'clock. So thank you for that. That's all.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna drag out this meeting at least another half hour, so. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's here. I'm glad that you're engaging in your civic duty here with the city council. But anyhow, thank you. I just wanted to make a point and a comment that, you know, our legal counsel goes through great lengths to try to provide us guidance. I think then when important issues are arising in our community, it's important to go through our emails that are very important to us because I think it protects us from many violations and what have you. So I say this to myself and all my colleagues that when we do have important decisions that come about or certain events that we consider what our legal counsel has provided us and guided us so that we can keep our city protected from any possible litigation or violations of any Brown Act. So thank you.
Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to staff again for, there's a lot of stuff that has been going on, a lot of emergencies in this community. It's not all bad here, though. We do have some positives, but I do want to thank and shout out to our staff for just rising to the occasion and doing everything that needs to be done so that our community continues to thrive. We do, I did also want to announce that we have some volunteer opportunities for the Fresno Madera Continuum of Care Annual Point in Time Account. And it is a limited time to register and get your training. Trainings are due by January twenty first, and you'll have opportunities to count unhoused in either Madera or Fresno counties, January twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth. It's very important that we get the point in time count done for both Madera and Fresno County. Because that count is very impactful to our allocation of resources for helping and assisting the unhoused community. So CAP MC is going to have their opportunity this year, Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, my apologies, and then Crossroads Village at three five, three seven, three seven, North Blackstone. So you can participate in at either location, and it does benefit both communities. So that's a good opportunity to go and help out the unhoused community. Not necessarily directly, but indirectly, you do get to engage with them and give them some items. But it is very impactful throughout the year to get some allocation for that community for those purposes. So I would encourage anybody who wants to volunteer to go ahead and volunteer. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes, I want to thank staff inside and outside both that are working on the trunk. Also, all those that have been working on the river. The river is running quite smoothly and it's beautiful. Also, to let everyone know that this has been a difficult day in reference to us on the Zoom, the call. Because of all the difficulty, Mark, I want to give you a special thank you for everything and for all those that are back at home. Be safe, God bless, and for those that are out here traveling, you as well. Continue to go to the meetings and enjoy. So God bless each and every one of you.
Mayor Pro Tem Mejia?
I too would like to recognize and acknowledge the work of Public Works of Staff. Our city, I feel, fared better than a lot of surrounding communities. So we're very grateful for that. And just thank you for the work that you have put in during this cycle.
Councilmember Villegas?
No comment.
Now then. Okay. All right. I want to thank the Martin Luther King Post Committee for inviting us out to participate in the excuse me, Martin Luther King event. And MLK School. It's a frog in my throat. In the Madera Hall of Fame. For inviting us out there also. And lastly, the AME, the Association of Mexican-American Educators, had their installation dinner for their for their members. I'm also a member of AME. And it's always a fun time when we get together with them. So anyways, civic groups doing civic minded activities during this time of hurt. I think I want to remember parks and recreation because they also they also did their part helping our folks out there from Public Works. So I want to acknowledge them also. Then please, I'm asking, please, for anyone who's thinking about driving into that area, please don't do it. It's very dangerous, number one, and it would hamper our our ability to be able to complete that project in a timely manner. So please stay away from that area. Look for an alternate route. And that way that our 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 folks can be out there and they take care of that that trunk line because it's very important. That's all I have. Thank anyone who's listening to our meeting tonight. Let me see if I can close this out. Well, item G, we will be going to close session. Can you take us to close session, please?
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items for close session. One is public employee performance evaluation under government code section five four nine five seven B one title, city manager. And two, conference with legal counsel existing litigation under government code section five four nine five six point nine A. One case, Madera Police Officers Association, Randy Williams Thomas Burns versus City.
Thank you very much. Marco, I have a question for you. Am I moving from to another Zoom line? Your close session?
You will have to disconnect and then reconnect under your close session link, which should be given to you. Actually, I'll shoot one over to you.
Okay, so I'll close out of this one for now.
Correct.
Okay. Mark, if you don't mind, come here. I apologize. Would you mind sending the same link to Councilmember Villegas and Councilmember Evans as well, Mark? Thank you.
Good. Yeah, mine is not working as well.
Yeah, but we still got to go to close session, so you can at least give it a try. Good, good night. Good night, everyone.
So in the absence of Hilda, we are coming back to report that there was no reportable action. And this meeting will be adjourned at
Are we ready to go, Justin?
Okay.
I thought we did.
I think I heard him say this, it was being recorded.
We're good.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Oh, you have to hit the gavel and we're good. There you go.
Everybody have a good night.
All right.
We'll see you in a couple weeks.
You guys be safe out there.
Oh yeah.
Thank you for